Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, April 16th, 2018 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four items on tonight's agenda, starting with item number one is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of April 2nd, 2018.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two, under items for consideration is a six-month Class B beer license for West Bend Baseball Club from May 1st, 2018 through October 1st, 2018, for the concession stand at Carl Cus Memorial Field in Regner Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a six-month Class B beer license for the West Bend Athletic Association from April 30th, 2018 through October 30th, 30th, 2018, for the concession complex bleachers and pavilion at Quas Creek Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number four is approval of the operators' licenses that were in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Being no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn.
Thanks, Greg. I'd like to call the April 16th Board of Public Works to order. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the April 2nd, 2018 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, about the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is permission to advertise contract 18-08, water utility pavement repairs at various locations. Presentation by city engineer Max Marishal. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, we come to you with a recommendation to advertise contract 1808, which is for pavement repairs at various locations after water main repairs have been done. So we would replace full-depth asphalt or concrete pavement in these, at these locations. The water utility developed a list of locations that they have currently, and in the contract, we have provisions for future needs throughout the summer. This is a contract we've been doing yearly for the past few years. So we go with the same process. The water utility, excuse me, has included $80,000 in their operating budget for 2018 to cover those needs. And what we have right now for the quantities and the estimates is up to $63,000, but of course, we'll have future needs, and we will address them, paying for only the repairs that we need for this season. Assuming positive action by the Board, you have the timetable in your memo, we would be coming back to you for award of this contract on May 21st.
Excellent. Thank you, Max. Any comments or questions from Max on this item?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number three is a grant of privilege agreement at 205 Edgewood Lane for another carriage walk. Max?
Thank you again. This item was a request from William Niers from 205 Edgewood Lane to install a carriage walk in front of his property. The property is at a corner of Edgewood Lane and Forest Avenue, so the carriage walk would be on the Forest Avenue side. A carriage walk is a private walkway that connects the sidewalk to the curb at the street, and it gets its name from the original purpose of easing the process of entering and exiting a house to on carriage back in the day. The property owners, William and his wife, Vicky, have submitted a signed grant of privilege agreement that was reviewed for form by the city attorney, and we recommend that the Board and Council approve the agreement.
Thanks, Max. Again, any comments or questions from Max on this one? Yes, Chris?
I'm just curious, Max, is there are certain rules or regulations or city codes where we would allow this sometimes, and sometimes we don't? I'm just curious about the reason why it needs to come to council every time.
The reason it needs to come to council every time is because it's a private improvement within the street right-of-way, and we would bring anything of that nature to council for liability issues. There usually, when we review those plans, we would find if there are any reasons to allow those improvements. Carriage walks are fairly common, where we practically never deny them. We would recommend a different location if we find any conflicts or if we know of future city improvements that would go in that location, et cetera. But that's been the process because of the liability issue of having a private improvement in the public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Max? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks a lot, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. At this time, I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order for April 16th, 2018. We have 11 items on tonight's agenda. Item one is approve the minutes of the April 2nd, 2018 meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item two is a presentation by Aylers regarding issuance and sale of 2,595,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A, with a presentation by John Cameron of Aylers. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. John Cameron with Aylers. Thanks for having us here this evening. What I'd like to walk through with you is the actual sale day report, which you should have available. The issuance is now 2,560,000, 2,560,000 of general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A. We did have a very good sale this morning. We took competitive bids this morning. We received eight bids, which is a very strong sale. From a competitive standpoint, what we like to see is at least three bids, so eight is very favorable. The winning bidder was Be OK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee. They're an underwriter that we see frequently bidding on competitive sales, and I know is an underwriter that's very familiar with the city. So again, a very strong sale. As part of the issuance, we were able to downsize the bond sale by $35,000 due to a premium that was received from the underwriter, part of which we were able to downsize, the other part we were able to put into the debt service fund to be able to keep the payments in 18 and 19 as smooth as possible. So the projects themselves are going to fund your annual capital improvement program. This is very consistent from a project standpoint with what Phil went through with you last month for the approval process, so nothing has changed in terms of projects and how they're being funded. You have your annual capital improvement program, as well as the planned water system projects that are all part of these notes. From a winning bidder standpoint, the overall true interest cost, or TIC, for the notes was 2.647%. The high bidder, in this case, was 2.8%, so a difference between the high and the low in terms of interest rate spread of just under $33,000. So even though we did receive quite a few bids, kind of a tight spread between the high and the low. From a rating standpoint, as part of the sale process, we did go through getting the debt issuance rated with the city's rating agency, which is Moody's. They did, as part of the rating process, affirm the city's existing rating, which is AA3. The rating report is included with the sale day packet. So beyond the kind of first page of the sale day report, if you continue to flip through, you have the bid tabulation, which just gives you a summary of the winning bidder's total cost, as well as the interest rates by maturity for the life of the notes, for the winning bidder, as well as the other underwriters that also bid on the deal. Pages five, six, and seven, just walk through the results of the financing plan in terms of the sizing, from the pre, comparing the sizing from the pre-sale estimate to the sale day results, in terms of the downsizing. One of the other items in terms of the downsizing was a little bit lower cost of issuance in terms of the underwriters' discount that they bid on this morning as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Otherwise, it was, like I said, a very positive sale for the city.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Your usual comments. You're not going to throw them out there?
I do have one, actually. Tell me about the Moody's bond ratings. Are you seeing, you know, back post-recession, not only were, you know, it was private, private businesses, individuals getting, you know, their credit tightened up, but municipalities worked too. I know Michigan, state of Michigan had some issues. There's some stuff going on in California. Are you seeing those rating agencies loosen up a bit? Are you seeing Moody's versus Standard and Poor loosening up a little bit?
Sure.
We've been with Moody's forever, and if we're going to get a more favorable look from another organization, I guess we'd like to at least consider that.
Sure. And I think that's a very valid question. Our experience, particularly with Moody's, is, and it's not too, too terribly different, I guess, from S&amp;P, but, you know, in some cases, they are, as you said, very, you know, somewhat quick to downgrade and slower to upgrade again. So I think in this case, you know, as you look at the rating report, some of the credit challenges, some of the, you know, part of the items that we felt should have been, I think, better adhered to from the rating agency in terms of looking at, you know, the city's debt burden and how you have a long-range plan in place to alleviate that, as well as, you know, the recent performance from the TIF districts and the city's enterprise funds. You know, now we have some audited results to be able to demonstrate that, and I think that we didn't, you know, the city didn't necessarily get the full credit of the positive performance there. So I think the hopes would be, you know, if you stay with Moody's in the future, that that would be recognized in the future with your next bond issuance. If not, then I think, you know, Standard and Poor's is certainly a very viable option from a rating agency standpoint.
Good. Thanks. I know we're putting you on the spot a little bit with Phil being our normal representative, but there's a couple of new aldermen in the office, in the room tonight, and for you guys, the better our rating is, the lower our cost of money is, or the interest rate we get. And it must be about five years ago, Adam, I think you were involved in some of those calls. Tatiana was the gal's name. Is she still the person with?
Unfortunately, we did not get Tatiana this time. I think we would have liked to in terms from a continuity standpoint, but so, yeah, I felt, I think, again, you know, both Phil and I kind of felt during the process that, you know, from a Moody's standpoint, maybe we took a step backwards in terms of an analyst who, you know, has, we've, you know, kind of built a relationship with and have some continuity in terms of understanding the city and understanding our, you know, the city's financial position. So, you know, that-
AA3 is still a strong rating.
Very strong, yes.
But Tatiana gave us some objectives three, four, or five years ago, and that was to lower our overall debt burden, which we've, you guys all know, we've done a great job of, increase our reserves, and also really address some of our underperforming TIFs. So on all avenues, we've really done a great job, and I appreciate just saying, you guys left there scratching your head, saying, hey, there, for a couple of years now in a row, we've got a trend. It's not a one-year blip on the screen. We've got a trend of really improving our financial position.
And we're kind of seeing that with Moody's more so than, say, Standard and Poor's.
If you got a 1-800 number for S&amp;P, maybe we'll be happy to-
We do. We do.
Good. Well, thanks again. End of, Adam?
Thank you. So if there's no other questions, I'll go on to item three, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 2,560,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Item four, resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department with a presentation by Director Craig Hepner.
Good evening. We have a number of donations. We want to thank the following organizations and families for their help. First one is $5,000 donated by Johnson Family Foundation towards the Eastside Downtown Riverwalk. Next one is $1,000 donated by First Bank Financial Center for sponsorship of the 2018 movie night in the park. The next one is $2,000 donated by West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation for beach operations. I'm going to slide the next one up, which is $500 donated by Whitetails Unlimited, Inc. for archery range improvements. The next seven all are for the 2018 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. $1,250 from Regalware Worldwide. $1,250 by Educators Credit Union. $1,250 donated by Rivershores Chiropractic. The next one actually should read $1,500. It's donated by Aztec Systems City Works. And we have $1,250 donated by Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, West Bend Pediatrics. $1,250 donated by JW Speaker. And $2,200 donated by Anytime Fitness. Again, those seven are all for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. And the final donation is $1,000 donated by Educators Credit Union for the 2018 Super Slide Days, which will be held at Regner Beach. So thank you very much, all those companies and foundations for their support.
Thanks, Greg. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item five is a resolution authorizing the transfer of park funds to, for Downtown Riverwalk Project. Again, presentation by Craig.
Yes, simply, we're going to ask for a transfer of $65,000 from what we call our PARC Fund, Park and Recreation Capital Fund, to an expense account towards the Downtown Riverwalk Project. This is money that the city acquired through the land sale to the Museum of Wisconsin Art a couple of years back, and it was donated by West Bend Mutual Insurance Company. So this transaction puts the money into our expense account for the Riverwalk Project.
Greg, entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, award insurance coverage for liability, property, equipment, crime, and workers' compensation with a presentation by, I'm lost. Jay?
Yeah, it says Michelle in your memo. Michelle wasn't able to be here this evening. She did take the lead for us to explore moving our insurance to Community Insurance Corporation. Tony Matarra is here with ANSI and Associates and is going to introduce himself and share with you, I think, the service that they can provide, the city of West Bend. You did also have in your packet the chart that showed the $42,000 savings by moving to CIC. There's also a potential for even more savings, assuming that we're able to have some additional success with our mod and have some additional dividend savings long-term. So we're excited about the change in the services that ANSI and Associates can provide the city of West Bend. Tony?
Thank you, Jay. Yes, I work with ANSI and Associates. I've been there 12 years now, and my primary focus is public entities, municipalities, school districts. And one of the great partners that ANSI works with is CIC, Community Insurance Corporation. Some of you in the public sector might be familiar with their parent company, County Mutual. Washington County is one of their partners as well. So you are definitely in good hands with somebody whose only focus is public entities. They're not, you're not going to be dealing with a loss control team that is working with you guys in the morning, and then they run over to a car dealer and tell them how to. So their focus, their toolbox is laser-sharp and is specifically driven for you guys. One thing I also want to say, show you is, or point out, I should say, is, I, Michelle did forward me what's in your packet for my review, and I was noticing how competitive the bid came in. One of the things that's great about working with CIC is there's, they're just really a steady organization. They have, in the last 15 years, have had one small minor rate increase. Other than that, they have a flat rate. So really, what you're seeing here is not us undercutting anybody, as much as this was more about us putting in, working with Michelle and Jay and Stephanie and your guys' team on this, was learning where we can show some of our differentiators and our value adds. Really, at the end of the day, what I challenge my team is, is back now, is we are an extension of West Bend. We are now employees of West Bend. So the only thing I would correct in Michelle's memo is when she refers to us as a broker. We do represent CIC, but we are more advisors. Brokerage is just a small part of what we do, and we look forward to joining the West Bend team here and putting some of these services and differentiators in place for you guys to continue to capitalize on this already culture of safety that you have in place. So thank you for that opportunity. I'll keep it short and sweet. So if there's any questions, I can, I can go on, but nobody likes to talk insurance this much.
Thank you. Craig?
Just to clarify, either for you or for Jay, when we're looking at this spreadsheet, the $42,000 savings is versus $697,000 or 650?
So you'll see that there's a deductible fund escrow, and that is upfront. You buy, you pay into the deductible fund a portion of it. The deductible fund is capped at $50,000, so you can have, no matter how many losses you have, you will be capped at $50,000. You'll have to pay no more than that. But you pre-fund that. In doing a loss analysis over the last five years, there's only one year that you guys would have paid more than the pre-funded escrow. So it's just, it's just an accounting thing that CIC does to kind of pre-fund that for you guys. And that is your money. So if, at the end of the day, every year that, say you have no losses this year, knock on wood, that $27,000 is already preloaded then for next year's opportunity. And if for some reason, we fail to live up to the promises we've made, and you switch again, you would get that money back. So that is your money.
That's great information. However, about a six and a half or seven percent savings is my question, is what we're, depending on how you're-
Yes.
Either we're, okay, perfect. Six and a half or seven percent savings, and you guys do have a West Bend office, I believe, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know some of the other folks competing for this insurance also have local West Bend offices, and just wanted to put it out there that we're keeping it local as well.
Yeah, probably I should have. I do actually work-
It's your chance to advertise, man.
Yeah, yeah. We're over there by the DMV up on that side of the town. We do have an office there with, I think, four full-time staffers and a couple satellite advisors like myself.
Good. Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Just assuming we approve, how long does this go till? Is it annual or?
Infinity.
It's an annual, kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate being a part of the team.
Item seven, resolution accepting a donation from Ms. Nancy Heaps with a presentation by Chief Kudick.
Good evening. You have before you a couple requests to accept donations. The first one comes, as you said, from Ms. Heaps. She requested a smoke detector and CO detector install and home safety inspection, a service that we at the Fire Department provide for free. She was happy with our service, so she gave us the donation.
Thank you. Do you just want to do the other two real quick?
Sure. The second one is the West Bend Lions Club donated $1,000 to use for safety vests for all of our personnel, to upgrade our safety vests, and also scene lighting. I did a public education thing for them one night, and they presented us with a check for $1,000. And the third one is a charitable gift from State Farm for $11,000, similar to a grant. It's called a charitable gift, and it's the same kind of system as a grant. Captain Kenny Asland from our Inspection Bureau wrote the request. As you can see, the items that we were requesting are listed there, and they provided us with a grant for $11,000. We appreciate that.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing you in the sparky mascot suit.
Yeah. That's, that was something I maybe did as a rookie, but not anymore.
That works, too. All right. So item seven, the resolution accepting a donation from Ms. Nancy Heaps. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item eight, resolution accepting a donation from West Bend Lions Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item nine, resolution accepting a charitable gift from State Farm Insurance Company.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. That motion carries. Uh, at this time, I'd like to recess the Finance Committee.
Thanks, Adam. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, April 16th, 2018, to order, and recognize that all eight aldermen are in attendance this evening. Item number one is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of April 2nd, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items two and three are two proclamations. Item two being an Arbor Day proclamation, and it reads, "Whereas Arbor Day is observed worldwide, celebrating the role of trees in our lives. Trees are among Wisconsin's most beautiful natural resources. The demands on our environment and resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values. And whereas Roots and Branches continues its educational efforts by providing for the 28th Annual Arbor Day School Program, which will be held this year at Green Tree Elementary School. In addition, educational materials and trees will be distributed to students in the West Bend School District to take home, plant, and nurture. Whereas, West Bend has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 33 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation for its tree planting ways, care of the urban forest, and high-quality forestry programs. Now therefore, I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of West Bend, and I urge all citizens to support Arbor Day, the efforts to plant and protect our trees and woodlands for the well-being of present and future generations, and support our city's urban forestry program, thanks to the Arbor Day Foundation, as well as Roots and Branches." Second proclamation is regarding Cleanup-Greenup Campaign, and it reads, "Whereas the residents of the city of West Bend are very proud of and enjoy the natural beauty of our community. And whereas, in order to foster an acceptably clean, self-renewing environment, Roots and Branches, with the help of individuals and community groups, promote an annual, community-wide effort to clean up and green up the earth. And whereas, all citizens are encouraged to recruit family, neighbors, friends, and coworkers to pledge to pick up litter, making West Bend a cleaner, more beautiful place in which to live, work, and visit. Now therefore, I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor in the city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 7th, 2018, Cleanup-Greenup Campaign in the city of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to be aware of the Cleanup-Greenup kickoff at Regner Park, and volunteer to help make West Bend litter-free by picking up the Riverwalk, area parks, neighborhoods, schools, and business areas, thanks in advance to all those who volunteer for Cleanup-Greenup." Uh, the consent agenda, pulling out item number five is next on the items.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number five, with Alderman Butch like abstaining.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Under items for consideration is item number 16, an ordinance creating Section 9.255 of the municipal code regarding sale, purchase, and possession of electronic nicotine delivery systems, vapor products. And a presentation by Chief of Police, Ken Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Uh, very briefly, you've all seen the vaping products by state statute. Uh, any juvenile or underage person that possesses the vapor, the vaping product that has nicotine in it would be, um, illegal for them to possess. The reason for the ordinance is to make vaping itself illegal, um, as it is difficult at times to test. Um, this request particularly came from the schools, um, as there are students that are vaping on school grounds, and it's hard to, if we don't find something in there, in other words, they can vape, and there would be nothing left in the device. So, um, that's why this ordinance was, uh, recommended. Several other communities around us have passed a similar ordinance. In fact, if Ian wants to comment on it, basically, it's the same ordinance that Hartford just passed, correct?
It's the same one I helped prepare and review for Hartford, just adapted for West Bend.
Adapted, meaning you erased Hartford and put in West Bend.
I put it, I put the code section in.
Gotcha. Perfect. All right. Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief regarding vaping? I would entertain a motion on the ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 17 is an ordinance amending Section 9.2 entitled Consumption of Fermented Malt Beverages and Intoxicating Liquor Regulated.
Uh, this ordinance, uh, was requested to make it clearer and easier for us, uh, for police to, to issue citations. I'll just explain very briefly. Uh, state statutes forbids somebody from taking alcohol from one premise to another or from bringing it into any premise. So, you can't walk into a bar and open up a beer or a bottle of wine. Um, similarly, we can't do it at our festivals, 'cause they have a permit. Strange enough, the way our ordinance was written, we could cite the people, because they also can't allow somebody to do it. We were having a hard time finding a specific ordinance to cite the individual. So, this makes it very clear so that the individual that brings it in can be cited.
Any questions?
I'll also note that the old definition of licensed premises didn't, excluded all parking lot sidewalks, roadways, et cetera, which is kind of contrary to things like music on main. Um, this clarifies that if the, the road or a sidewalk is part of a licensed premises, it's also prohibited within that licensed, that area for the picnic license. That would be applicable at that time.
Good. Motion's been made. Do you have a second?
Second.
And just, my only comment is, I think this is, it's stemming back to, um, to trying to ensure that we don't have on a music on main night, the same night German night is, that we're not having folks from music on main walking out of one premise through downtown to another premise, premises, premises.
Yes, that's, that's partly what stemmed from this, and I'll just explain. So, in that case, the licensee is responsible, as I say, nobody can carry in and nobody can carry out. But this also puts a burden on the individual, so when people are trying to sneak stuff under their coats and stuff like that, if the license holder is responsible and is taking efforts, but somebody is bringing it in, then we will take, and, and we've asked them to put up signage to make it very clear that people aren't allowed to bring alcohol in or remove it.
So, volunteers for these things are working as hard as they can, but if someone is going out of their way to smuggle some beer in or out, that is on the, on that person doing that, makes sense to me.
Which, if I can just, so people understand, that's, that's a state law, and it also, when you think about it, it makes sense. Nobody would walk into a bar or, you know, an establishment and bring a beer in and open it up, but they somehow think that when it comes to picnics and other people that get outdoor events, that they can do that.
Mike, you have a comment?
Chief, I'm curious, does this put any burden on the business owners, the bars or restaurants, to put signage up that indicates that this is a ordinance or a policy?
They don't have to put signage up. They certainly can, but, but it's always been the state law. Anybody that, in fact, I believe you were a bartender one time, right? You can't let people leave with open, with the exception of the wine bottle, and that's a special exception in the statute where it has to be recorked or packaged and that kinda stuff, so...
In regards to bringing it into the establishment, though, um, is, does the burden still fall on the, the owner of the bars?
Yes, if they bring something in and open it up, yeah. So, or carry in an open glass of beer or something from another premise.
Right. I'm thinking, I have a 12-pack of beer at home, and I'm gonna put a bunch in my pocket and go to the bar. Um, if I'm not aware that there's an ordinance about that?
I think, I think most people are. I can't imagine anybody thinking that they could legally do that. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not so sure they have to put up special signage, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
If, I suppose if, if a place has a particular problem, we'd ask them to do that, but there's no requirement that they do it.
Anybody else?
So, I'm sorry. So, if it's already a state law, the reason that we're adjusting the ordinance, what was that again? So, the state laws are adopted specifically in the alcohol licensing, uh, stat, in Chapter 12. Um, the, this was not clearly addressed in 9.2, which is orderly conduct. Uh, so, the establishments it already applied to under Chapter 12, uh, that wasn't an issue. It was more clarifying this section of the code as it would apply to the person who's carrying the alcohol in. Um, so, this just makes it more clear and lays out explicitly within our ordinance is what we're giving tickets for.
Here is the problem, Alderman Jenkins, we were having a hard time actually citing, we, we would've had to arrest him for a state statute and not be able to cite him, which, for these, we cite everybody else. Cause it's, yeah.
Got it? Any other questions? A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution honoring Alderman Mike Chevalier on his last day, currently, of last day of service to the city of West Bend, and that resolution reads, "Whereas Mike Chevalier, Chevalier, was elected as District 3 alderperson from April of 2016 to April of 2018, faithfully representing his constituents in the city of West Bend for two years. And whereas during Mike Chevalier's tenure, he served as a representative on the Board of Public Works, Finance Committee, Tourism Committee, Park and Recreation Commission. And whereas Mike Chevalier exemplified outstanding leadership as District 3 alderperson, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Mike Chevalier and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend, presumably passed and approved the 16th day of April 2018." Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
We do need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries.
Can I speak?
You sure can, Mike.
I did enjoy this, uh, past two years. Um, the city of West Bend has wonderful people to work with, um, the department heads and almost every level that I've gotten to work with. Also, uh, these group of gentlemen, and you too, Stephanie, uh, have been wonderful to work with, uh, great chemistry, um, been very pleasant, and the person that's taking this seat, I'm sure is gonna do a better job than I. I think you know who he is.
Thanks, Mike. We're pretty confident of that, too. Item number 19 is a resolution honoring Alderman Adam Willikett for his years of service, and it reads, "Whereas Adam Willikett was elected as District 7 alderperson from April of 2012 to April of 2018, faithfully representing his constituents in the city of West Bend for six years. And whereas during Adam Willikett's tenure, he served as Chairman of the Finance Committee, a representative on the Board of Public Works, Plan Commission, Tourism Commission, Joint Review Board, Municipal Budget Task Force, Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, Revolving Loan Fund Committee, Downtown Business District, Downtown Business Improvement District Board. And whereas Adam Willikett exemplified outstanding leadership as District 7 alderperson, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Adam Willikett and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend, passed and approved the 16th day of April 2018." Thank you, Adam. Where are we?
Well, I wish I would've been first, 'cause Mike basically stole my speech, so, um, I will add that I am looking forward to Monday Night Golf League, so I'll be thinking about you guys.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. I've got a couple of real quick things to say about both of these guys, considering their arms still probably hurt from the twisting that I gave them, Adam, six, seven years ago, and Mike, a few years ago, to step up and serve the city of West Bend. And, um, Mike was nearing, or just about, or just made it into being an empty nester and was looking forward to enjoying some time, um, at home with his wife, and his wife was looking forward to some time away from Mike, so I think she helped me sell the idea of Mike running for alderperson, but thank you very much. I'm glad you did. You filled an awesome role at the time that, that we had a vacancy in District 3. And, and Adam was living peacefully out in the town of Trenton, renting a beautiful farmhouse, um, and, uh, had a desire, little did he know, that he had a desire to come back to the city and, uh, help support the community in which he was born and raised. So, he, uh, picked up and moved, uh, into District 7, moved to Barton, rented an apartment for a year, two years before, uh, purchasing a house there. Uh, so, he really did turn his life upside down, um, to help improve West Bend. So, both of these two guys really exemplify, uh, the old phrase that says, if you have the ability to make a positive impact, you've got the responsibility to make a positive impact. So, thanks both, to both of you guys. We're not quite done yet. Couple more agenda items yet tonight. Thank you both. And don't, uh, don't avoid taking my calls, because we've got a few committee and commission positions that, uh, could use some quality people on as well.
That goes two ways.
Exactly. Item number 20 is a resolution to apply for Wisconsin DNR stewardship grant for seal coating and other maintenance activities on the Eisenbahnen State Trail. We have a presentation tonight by Cindy Lines, Park and Rec Project Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. The Parks Recreation Forestry Department is applying for, requesting a resolution to apply for grant funding for maintenance activities on the Eisenbahnen. Um, the, the project is, includes seal coating, crack filling on the Eisenbahnen, doing shouldering along where the shouldering's been washed away, and ma, and, um, retaining walls along the edge where the erosion's taken out the base, but below the asphalt. The estimated cost of the project is $50,175.50. Grant funding is, uh, this is a stewardship grant, so it covers 50% of the project if you're awarded the grant, and then the city has to match it. So, the amount we're applying for is a little over $25,000. Um, we estimate that $13,400 would come from force account labor from the Parks Department for equipment and labor, um, and the rest of the money would come from, uh, capital improvement program funds that are budgeted for 2019 in the amount of $25,000. So, obviously, we won't use the whole amount if we get the grant.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions? Entertain a motion on the other?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any final questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 21 is a resolution to apply for Wisconsin DNR stewardship grant and for any other applicable DNR grants for the Downtown Riverwalk Rehabilitation Project, the west side.
This resolution is to apply for stewardship grants for the section of the Riverwalk on the west side between the new pedestrian bridge and the Veterans Avenue Bridge on the south end of the project area. Um, in, last fall, we met with the Riverwalk Committee and talked to them about what was proposed for the east side, and they wanted to repeat those elements on the west side. We also asked them to look at the proposed concept plan for the west side and just comment on what they liked about it. Four of the things that they mentioned they really wanted to keep on the west side were, um, maximize the width of the Riverwalk behind those buildings, uh, make sure we tried to get that path under Highway 33 that was proposed, um, keep some of the parking at the north end of the project area, and try to get the canoe kayak launch in the project. area, and try to get the canoe kayak launch in the project. We've, I've estimated, without engineering being completed, we've come up with a cost estimate for that chunk of the Riverwalk of $2,397,000. That includes design and engineering fee, permitting, erosion control, all the construction, de-watering, and some of those other items that were in the east side. If the grants awarded and the city accepts the award, this is also a 50% match. It's a stewardship grant. So we're asking for permission to apply for this grant for the Riverwalk on the west side. We would apply for the north end of the west side next spring.
Thank you. Any questions for Cindy?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Because we're applying doesn't mean we're going to get anything, and just because we get something doesn't mean we're matching. We've really just begun thinking about the engineering, I think. So it's really not locking us in anything. It's giving you folks the authorization to go bird dog some money.
Yes. If we get awarded a grant, we accept it. We have to match it 50%. We could get nothing, some or half of the project cost, which is a stretch, so.
Gotcha. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry. One more question, sorry.
Question for you, Cindy. So if we apply for the grant, it says in here that the Riverwalk would go underneath 33. If some of those pieces were not able to occur, would we have to lose the grant? Or can we put those funds towards other features?
The Riverwalk Committee wanted to include those areas on the west side that were in the concept plan. Some of those are on the north end of the west side, so those would be something that we would include in the next grant application. We're talking about the area from the north pedestrian bridge and south, which is mostly that skinny area behind the buildings and the river.
Okay.
So.
Sorry. Thanks.
Sure.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Item number 22 is a adopted amendment to the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the city of West Bend, Wisconsin, located at the southwest corner of State Highway 33 and Scenic Drive. And we have a presentation tonight by business and development planner Jim Ranky. And Jim, are you going to talk about the next three agenda items, kind of altogether?
I can, I can loop them all in.
Bang them all out.
Sure. The first item is the comprehensive plan change. We had a proposal for the change at the south, southwest corner of Washington Street and Scenic Drive. Essentially, this change is to modify the land uses out there, which were originally for open space, commercial, single-family, and two-family. And what we're doing is modifying that area to include just single-family, or I should say, commercial and open space. This is the mirror of the regulated wetlands and floodplain out there, and also provide a buffer to the south. This amendment is to also facilitate the permanent zoning, which is the next item, for the same 43 acres. They're proposing various zoning for B4 general business, P1 park recreation, the floodplain wetlands, the shoreline wetlands, and the non-shoreland wetlands. This would be in conjunction for, to facilitate the development of that property there. This plan, or this area, is also included in the Cooperative Boundary Agreement, and all the information was sent to the township for the review. At this time, we didn't receive any kind of comments or concerns regarding that for their comment, commentation on the proposals. So staff would recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan and the zoning as presented. And then the last item is another zoning on the north side of Washington Street. There, we would like to take the zoning, or the property owners requesting a zoning change from the B4 general warehousing district to the B1, which is the commercial, the general commercial district that we have. They're going back to the original zoning of B1 to facilitate the development with that building for a tenant build-out.
Thank you, Jim. I'll take the items one at a time. The first we just read is the 2020 Comprehensive Plan modification. Any questions for Jim?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 23 is permanently zone approximately 43.2 acres of land located at the southwest corner of State Highway 33 and Scenic Drive to B4 general business and warehousing, P1 park, recreation, and open space, NSW non-shoreland wetland, SW shoreline wetland, and FPW floodplain wetland district by Craig Devonport from Devonport Family Limited Partnership Number One.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions for Jim? Hear none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 24 is rezone 424 West Washington Street from B4 general business and warehousing and FPS floodplain storage district to B1 community business and FPS floodplain storage districts by Lee Staling Ace Canvas.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions for Jim? Hear none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
And onto reports. Item number 25 is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right. As the city generally knows, the past couple of years, the libraries had maintenance issues with the boiler, elevator, multiple times, water leaks, all that fun stuff. We started talking about increasing the amount of funds that we put in our emergency fund. So that tied with the strategic planning that we're doing. I think that's a really good idea, so I'm glad that we'll be in the process of doing that. We chose Byte Studios to move forward with our website design. I talked about that last meeting. We're just awaiting a timeline from them on that. And then finally, we accepted a bid from Blaze Landscape for the water feature in Patriots Park totaling $33,900. And that money was all donated from the Schlegel Family Foundation, so thank you to that foundation for that.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Item number 26, the report by either Alderman Willikett, oh no, by Alderman Willikett regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
We met April 3. Two exciting things. There's a group called The Commons, which is basically a group of college and high school students that they're going to bring downtown and kind of create a fresh vision for downtown that's kind of outside of what everyone down there thinks in their head. So look forward to that later this year. And then we also got an update from John Torinis, who is working on rehabbing the old theater. Sounds like they don't quite know what they want to do with it yet, but look forward to seeing what happens there. That's about it.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions for Adam? Item number 27 is a report by either Alderman Caston or Alderman Willikett regarding planned commission.
I guess, one more. Let me just pull it up here. So we met on April 10, and basically most of the meeting was rezoning the three things that we just did at the end of council. And, and one extratorial, extraterritorial CSM. So it was a pretty, pretty mellow meeting.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions for Adam or Rich? And finally, item number 28, a report by Alderman Butchlick regarding the deer management committee meeting.
We had a meeting on March 26, and we had Lieutenant Farron give us a presentation on sharpshooting. I know the question to the council has been, how much is a sharpshooting going to cost? So Lieutenant Farron did a great job in doing research, and he came up with, the Department of Agriculture will actually come into a community that has problems with deer population, and they will only come in and do at the minimum cost to what it would be for them to come in. Now, there were some questions that the committee had for Dwayne, and we don't have all that information as yet, but Dwayne just notified me and said he's got all the answers. So we're going to have one more meeting to discuss further details into going into sharpshooting, looking at sharpshooting. But the committee also had a major concern about just doing sharpshooting and eliminating the archery hunt this year. And the concern was, since we had some gentlemen that did start the program for us, we learned an awful lot from just that short timeframe that they were out there. We gained a lot of knowledge, and we figure now, being so early in the season, we are going to get everything put together. We're going to start a lot earlier. And the committee felt like we are heading in the right direction. We have a lot of good information. And right now, we are possibly looking at maybe combining the archery hunt early, and then the sharpshooting would come in, in the winter month, to help us get that deer herd population down. We know that it's going to be a lot more difficult if we just stay with the archery hunt. The sharpshooters will be able to help us get that deer herd population down quicker, and we will be able to maintain the deer population continually for, moving forward with the archery hunt. So at this time, we're looking, if the council has any questions regarding that, or if they have any concerns. If not, we will be coming back to the council next meeting with a proposal on exactly where we want to hit.
Good. Thanks, John. Any questions for John? Or wait and see what comes back? There you go, Mike.
John, I'm a little bit late on this, so maybe you can inform me, but have the other alternatives been considered, and then the expenses for things like trapping or relocation, have they been considered? And they've been already determined not to be viable sources, or too expensive?
Yeah, the trapping or relocation is really a touchy situation, and they, it's not really legal to take deer and transfer because of the CWD. And now there has been a deer that has been located in the north end, north Farmington with CWD. So there is a concern with that. So until we know that we can do, move forward with on that, this is still the best solution.
Any other questions?
I'll just say I'm happy that you guys are considering sharpshooting. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Be no further business before the common council adjourn. Are there any announcements before we go back to finance? Adam, take it away.
Thanks. I'd like to reconvene the finance committee for item 10, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statutes, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and offer to purchase city-owned land, controlled land in TIF number five. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Willikett?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And number 11, again, a closed session, an offer to purchase city-owned land in TIF number 12.
Move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Can I have another roll call, please?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Willikett?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
No.